Yeah.
All right, you're live.
We've been experiencing some technical difficulties. Please stand by while we get online. Or live. Not online. Ha ha, in person. I'm using DVD.
Okay, it's good to know. It's good to know, thank you.
Otherwise, everything you say...
It's a hot mic, that's right.
Can be used against you.
It's a matter of public record and public, yeah, yeah. Gotcha.
Picture, picture.
Good job, Josh.
Thank you. There's two boxes. I kind of forgot about this other one in the back.
God, it's not the most accessible closet, is it? There.
Oh, boy.
That's us?
Move back to normal. Completely.
No.
Completely.
Like it never happened, eh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're good?
Recording, lights on.
Perfect.
Welcome, everyone. Those here in the room, those watching at home, or watching in the future, to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting. It is the fourteenth of June. We are back in person in meetings. And before we get rolling, I have been reading the spiel regarding the operating under the state of emergency. But now that we are back to public meetings, I thought it might serve the board well and anybody listening or watching at home. Just as a reminder, when you do come to participate, to have your cellphones off, muted, put away. If you do need to take or make a phone call or have a conversation with another person, please step out of the room. Meetings of the board are public in the sense that they are held in public. It doesn't necessarily mean that they are public meetings like a town meeting. There's no statutory requirement in Maine that the public be permitted to speak. However, our town charter requires that the public shall have the opportunity to be heard. And as such, the board has adopted the following ground rules. Persons wishing to address the Board of Selectmen on any item that is not on the agenda may do so during the Citizens Forum. The Chair with the consent of the Board may allow for additional comment or participation, or we also may impose certain time limits. In general, the Board should not, will not discuss or act on matters that are not on the agenda as they have had no time to prepare. Come on in. But will receive comments for consideration later. Emergency items that may be considered are only those affecting public health, life property, or the public peace. Similarly, with public comment, persons wishing to address the Board on an item which appears on the agenda shall wait until the Chair announces the consideration of the item. And then, they may address the Board by being recognized and addressing the Board as a group. No individual shall engage an individual member of the Board. All questions and remarks shall be addressed by the Board as a whole. And all questions addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the Town Administrator and not to any individual town employee. There shall be no conversation between the floor and the Board. Has to go through the podium, so it can be recorded and be a public conversation. And then, public hearings similarly. And due to confidentiality laws, the Board does not allow complaints or accusations to be stated in public against any personnel. Should such matters arise, the Chair will stop the Speaker and describe the appropriate procedure to share a personnel complaint. Any questions?
Nope.
Fabulous. That being said, Mike, would you care to read the quote of the evening?
Sure. Whenever you find yourself on the side of the majority, it is time to pause and reflect. Mark Twain.
Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to open the podium for any non-agenda items. Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, let's move along to the Administrator's Report.
Just two things beyond the length of the agenda. One is to extend a thanks to the valet clerks that worked last Tuesday in, hmm, good conditions, but it was a little stifling at times in terms of weather, but we persevered. So, just a thank you to those folks. And also, congrats to the eighth grade class of Lincolnville Central School, who will graduate tomorrow.
Nice, great. Congratulations.
That's it.
Okay, if you remember something else, just jump in. Let's move, are there any questions for David on the Administrator's Report? Let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
One meeting that is not listed here is the Midcoast Internet Coalition Meeting is Wednesday, June 16th at 5:00 PM. Lakes and Ponds Committee is scheduled to meet Tuesday, June 22nd, 7:00 PM. Midcoast Solid Waste Corporation is scheduled to meet Wednesday, June 23rd, 6:30 PM. And the Board of Selectmen meet next on Monday, June 28th, 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Seeing nothing, let's move along. We have two sets of meeting minutes to consider and approve. First, we have the 24th of May.
I move that the Board approve the May 24th, 2021 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? The only thing that I had a question for the Board on was under replacement of the Beach Fire Station. I didn't see included where I read the email on the, a butter that wished to have their statement read. And so, I feel like for the record, because they made a point of writing into the Board that that should be included somewhere in the minutes. And I couldn't say exactly where, but I would say somewhere between line 213 and 215, adding that commentary in. What's the thought?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will amend my motion to include your request.
Okay.
And I will second that amended motion.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Oh, we can do this now.
That feels good. Thank you all. Motion passes. And we have a second set of minutes before us.
I move that the Board approve the June 9th, 2021 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Oh, and I should just note for the public, I'm sorry, I was remiss to say this. We do have a select Board Member excused for this evening, in case you're wondering why there's just four of us.
By the way, we're not streaming.
We aren't.
On YouTube. Mind if I go and...
Yeah, let's take a pause and just click that button. If it's not on YouTube, it didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Where were we those last five minutes?
Just for everyone watching at home, or not watching at home on YouTube, but maybe on the local access channel. We're just, this is our first in-person meeting and we're getting the technology up and running. Technology's so wonderful.
Best thing to go is your access, though. Just saying.
This may conveniently get us to the public hearing time, though, so I don't have to jump around.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
That's gotta be fun doing the meeting minutes when we jump around all over the place and you're like...
I'm just worried that it won't be a DVD to go on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's a very good point.
No, that's recording.
DVD records off the cable.
Maybe this next budget season, we should talk about having muzak that can play over the...
Hmm, that would be nice.
Elevator music.
We'll be right back.
Yeah.
There's about a minute on the clock.
I can just think of a few to which right now, but I wouldn't be good. I'm terrible. I really am. Not good.
But it won't allow us to sign in if you haven't signed. Yeah, it's, it won't allow us to, that's us. When we zoomed, we were doing access YouTube from here. And you're logged in. It's whatever browser it's using through the wirecast program. It's not... Don't think it's a camera.
Perhaps we need to suspend our YouTube for this evening and get someone with a higher pay rate than us to...
I mean, at the very least, we cannot go to the DVD after restaurant.
Oh, good.
There's always that.
Yeah, it just won't be live.
Okay.
What do you know, is it Lexis?
I don't look that great on YouTube anyway, besides, doesn't look me at all.
No one does.
Or is that turned green? I think that's very important, it's not really be here, but... I don't know, but this, I feel like this shouldn't allow us to push that questions, right?
I would not.
All right, I'm gonna give up in thirty seconds. Good day, hell. I guess I should have tried that earlier today.
Well, I don't know if you would have been able to do anything. I know.
Well, I could have known it didn't work.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call my tech support and he cut that earlier than I planned.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna let it pretend it's doing, and maybe something will pick on it. Sorry.
So, we're proceeding without live YouTube?
Yeah, there's no way. I don't know how to get logged in.
Well, we'll take the pressure off it.
We can do this.
And upload to YouTube later.
Yeah.
Okay, so, our next agenda item is for a public hearing at 6:30. And so, with the Board's permission, we will move along to Agenda Item Number Seven. And just proceed until we get to the 6:30 deadline and jump back into Agenda Item Number Six. So, Agenda Item Number Seven, we have an application for a catering permit for the 17th of July by Dan Deline Catering. David, so we have a representative who is planning on attending?
I don't believe we do. I don't believe that any, either one of these catering permits does anyone plan to attend.
Ah, they were invited, though, yes. Yes. All right.
Well, I didn't see anything amiss with the application or the drawing.
No.
Do you want a, do you want a motion to open the public hearing? Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, 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 for, yeah, for number seven.
I'm confused. Okay.
Yep. Yep, so we're just looking, this is a one-time catering event for a, looks like lawn dinner, private event sort of thing. So, I will entertain a motion.
Well, I move that the Board approve and sign the catering permit as submitted by Dan Deline Catering for an event occurring at 2773 Atlantic Highway on July 17th, 2021, between the hours of 4:30 PM and 8:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
I do have a, I have no idea, and maybe I do know where this place is. But is it on, right on Route One, and it says 90 guests? So, if you take an average of three per car?
It's the Ozberg compound.
Yeah.
The whole point.
So, I guess there would be adequate parking and, I'm just...
Yeah.
Thinking people off Route One, you know, parking and, you know...
Yep.
Adequate area to get an emergency vehicle, you know, that's all. If it's, so if that's, I do know where that is now.
Yep.
So...
I'm not familiar with the compound, so I don't know where they are.
Just over the Duck Track.
Yeah, I know where they are, but I haven't been back in there. So, I don't know kind of, where they are.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, unfortunately, those considerations aren't really the burden of the caterer either.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's where it's nice, either the applicant or the, or a representative involved is, comes to say hello, so we can ask those kinds of questions, but it isn't necessarily relevant to the catering permit. But nonetheless, good considerations for sure. Any more discussion? Seeing nothing. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. And at our last meeting, in similar vein, we had tabled this request pending being able to ask the applicant some questions. We also asked for an updated schematic, because it was somewhat lacking previously. And so, we have that supplement here. So, if the Board finds that supplemental information to the initial application that we received at our last meeting, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board approve and sign qualified catering organization application for catered function as submitted by Seacoast Catering for an event occurring at the Edge on June 26th, 2021, between the hours of 4:00 and, 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM.
So, moved?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing. All those in favor? Thank you very much. We still have some time before the public hearing. So, I don't know that the sidewalks is a three-minute conversation. I'm going to feel optimistic that Agenda Item Number 10, the proposed amendment to the Harbor Ridge subdivision ESCO agreement, could be a quick conversation, and if not, we could always put a pin in it. So, if the Board's okay, we'll jump to Agenda Item Number 10.
Yeah. Yeah.
And do you wish to get up and address the Board?
I will.
We have the applicant here, so we're going to invite him up to the podium. Just introduce yourself.
Hello, members. Steve Case. I live at 90 Rocky Top Terrace in Lincolnville. And I tried to get all the information I could, put together as common sense-wise as I could. As we were getting, we were supposed to have pavement on this project last fall. We missed it by a week because of the cold weather came in. So, then it was all set up for May 17th. And I'm a contractor per se. I've been doing all the site work for the lots. That's part of the deal. When I sell the lots, I do the site work. And so, there's three houses going on. And before, a week or so before May 17th, we had, you know, concrete pump trucks coming in there and turning around and like doing five-point turns on the road to get in the pump. And I'm saying, my inner gut was telling me, so this is gonna be a problem, because there's 30 to 40 loads per house lot coming in with stone, sand, wood. And I even forgot about the... And I even forgot about the lumber trucks and the cranes that sit, trusses and all that, so. With this heat, even though he said, when I spoke to the paver, Sam Patterson, he said, you gotta keep heavy equipment off for a week. I said, okay, Sam, but it's like, you know, eighty degrees every day. These trucks are coming in, they got ties this fat on there, they're carrying seventy, eighty thousand pounds. There's not gonna be much left to the binder when they start doing four-point turns again in these lots. He says, wait, wait till it cools off a little bit. Wait till October or something like that. So, um, nonetheless, I, I put him off and he said he'd hold the pricing for me till then. So pricing for me was fine. The bond is still the bond. And I spoke to the owners that were in the middle of, you know, just getting their foundations in. That's no problem with them because they don't want their new road being passed with binder right at the beginning.
Yep.
So, uh, that's why I'm here.
Yep. Any questions for Steve?
I, I get it, yeah.
Just makes sense.
Yeah, it's a very straightforward request, so thank you for explaining it to us. Um, as such, does anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we instruct the town attorney to draft at Stephen Marbury's cases expense an amended ESCO agreement by between and among Stephen and Marbury case and the town, altering the completion date of the base course of pavement to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and requiring an additional ten thousand dollars in ESCO funds.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, David.
Did I understand right? You wanted an extra ten thousand?
Yep. Yeah, so if, at this point, you wanna communicate with David and you and David will coordinate the details.
Or.
All that. Yep. Great.
Thank you.
And it is six thirty, so I will entertain a motion, please. Back to agenda item number six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Take care.
Thank you.
Um, I move to open the public hearing concerning the special amusement permit application filed by the Lobster Pound Restaurant.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded. Uh, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, dude, we have an applicant who was planning on attending. Yeah, I think that's Deb.
Oh.
Yeah.
Guys, come right in.
Come on.
I don't think Deb wants.
Deb doesn't wanna speak on the Lobster Pound application.
I let Barry know and he said, thank you, blah, 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 so I don't know what you wanna do.
Well, we have opened the public hearing regarding the special amusement permit application as filed by the Lobster Pound Restaurant. We do not have a representative fro, for the Lobster Pound Restaurant present. Do we have any member of the public that wishes to speak on the special amusement permit application? I didn't think so. I will entertain a motion, please.
I move that the board close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Now, having had the public hearing and closed the public hearing, does the board wish to deliberate?
I think it's important that we stress the fact, even though there may not be any complications, the representative from the organization requesting the permit be present.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
Not for interrogation, but for questions.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I, I just, I don't think it's a lot to ask.
Yeah. Well, in particular, not that any prior incident is relevant or pertinent to this particular circumstance or any circumstance in the future, but things come up and if we've done our job vetting any question that may come up, then, you know, we're doing right by the process and the procedure. Um, I didn't see anything in the application that would discourage me though from moving forward, just, you know, in the future stressing that presence is appreciated greatly. Um, so does the board wish to make a motion?
Yeah. Um, if I could find it, yeah. Oh, yes. I move that after having held a public hearing, that the board finds that the application submitted by the Lobster Pound Restaurant complies with the standards set forth in the ordinance governing the issuance, suspension, and revocation of special amusement permits for the town of Lincolnville and that the permit be granted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Nothing, all those in favor? I just, I'm not gonna get tired of just being able to raise my hand. I really. Uh, all right, folks, so we are back, um, to agenda item number nine. Um, Slapman Ray, would you care to take this?
Yeah, this is like, uh, like the packet, uh, suggests add adequate constituents respect. Request, last time, uh, we talked about it, a woman who lives right down the road and takes a children's pump to the school was concerned about safety for her kids on two thirty-five, remember? And so we had, uh, Patrick, whose last name I can't remember, from the DOT come.
Adam.
Yeah, Patrick Adams, talk about, uh, various options, should we pursue grants with the DOT timelines, costs, all that stuff. Anyway, um, she was, she contacted me again, was interested in, uh, perhaps the town going another way and that would be do it yourself, get a private contractor to do the engineering and the work. Um, she's, I, at this point, I was gonna turn it over to her, but she's not here because I don't know what her ideas really are in terms of fundraising and where she'd like the sidewalks. Uh, she was talking about from the school to the pump, more or less. You know, and, uh, anyway, as, well, I'll, I won't talk for her, but, uh, you remember that, uh, it's gonna cost a lot more to go with a private contractor than with, with there. And, um, also you've got, uh, ish, because it's state roads, you're still gonna have to have the DOT involved. And time, and you're gonna have less leverage, I guess, in working with easements and, uh, property owners. When you have the DOT on your side, they can make things, some things happen that perhaps privately we couldn't make happen. Anyway, all those things being said, I don't know where you guys wanna go with this.
Yeah. Josh?
So, just so everyone's clear, it's the estimate for this sidewalk project is nine hundred thousand dollars. And so I, I can't support the town paying for that when the DOT would pay for, what, eighty percent? If we, if we file the application and we go through the process, that, uh, it's kind of obvious it's a non-starter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we should work with the DOT. We should, we should do what we talked about, which is invite Patrick Adams to do a sidewalk with us and then explore, um, that possibility. But we just can't afford a nine hundred thousand dollar sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah. Kern, you had a comment?
Obviously, with the numbers involved there, yes, that would be what to do to, to start with. My original thought was this was presented to the board with concerns of a safe pathway from school to library. It seems to me, and I could get behind promoting, giving money to do this, if they would consider using the nature trail that's at the back of the school that ends at the library. It seems to me that it is so much safer for kids and, and, and people to keep them away from the road. I would be more, um, I would be more positive in looking at that nature trail and saying, look, whose land is this? Where does it go? Can we enhance this to make it safe? Um, have it lit somehow, some way, if that's what they wanna do, and make it a place for people to start to the library, to the school. We've got another trail. We've got a cross-country trail that the school is, belongs, you know, has, and they use. And, and I just think with the way Route two thirty-five intersects fifty-two down here and how close the houses already are to the road, I see no eminent domain unless they take a house, really. And I see no safe way to put a sidewalk on either side of the road. Um, I would rather see them use the trail behind the school and I'd be willing to look at fundraising or town tax money to, to a certain point to help enhance that and make it safe for people to use. Um, I don't know what the, I don't know what the, um, the draw is using two thirty-five because in my mind, there's nothing safe about walking down Route two thirty-five. The closer you get to where it intersects fifty-two, it gets worse and worse. Let's keep the kids off the street if they want, not only can they go to the library or, and we got plenty of parking at the school. Anybody can park up there. The kids, you can, they can go from school to library. They can go to Breeze Mayor Park. They can go to the pond. There's other hiking trails down there. It just makes sense to explore that option.
Yeah, that's.
To me, to me.
Well, and I do recall, um, Patrick saying that they will consider projects from, from a facility to another facility. So there is, particularly when schools are involved. Um, and so getting back to your point, that inviting him back to do that onsite visit, it's not gonna cost us anything but our time, um, and have, have that walk around, look at that path, look at, and he very may well look at that path that we already have established and say, well, this is a much safer option than it, safer, I don't know, less expensive.
Mike, Mike, do you know anything about the path? Whose path is it?
It's a nature trail. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm on the Conservation Commission. We basically, yeah, we tend to it. Yeah, we, we keep, we keep the path clear. I was down there last week, yeah.
Okay.
What's the condition of it?
Well, I have to say, pretty good because I worked with it.
Well, thank you.
Isn't it?
Thanks for getting started on that.
Well, I think, I think you could get through, yeah.
Isn't most of it townland?
Yes, townland.
It's all.
I always thought it was townland. However, there's, you know, it goes right by someone's house. And we've had to get permission to do some work from that person because I think it would cause a lot of noise or just be good neighbors, you know?
Yeah, with the, okay, relationship to the property.
But, yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, but it's a trail through the woods, you know? And, uh, it could use some work and it's not ADA compliant and, you know, it never will be.
Yeah.
And, uh.
But with the DOT support, perhaps, you know, we can get it to that safe and navigable condition.
Uh, you would have to, uh, but you know, we're exits out on school property way down, um, behind the fields. So they would have to figure out how to get from safety, I guess, from there to there, um, you know, to the school doors. Um, but yeah, it's in good shape. Uh, some of it's con steep, not really, you know?
Yeah.
And it does, there's cross, there's a bridge, which is in great shape, which would need to be replaced, you know, for safety purposes.
It would just seem to me that that would be a better consideration than trying to alter what already, you know?
Yeah, I know, I, I agree with you, Kern. However, uh, this, this person's concern was how to get her children from where she lives, which is right down two thirty-five. I mean.
It's my understanding the trail, you could see her house from the trail. Or pretty close.
Well, but anyway, you know, taking, taking the, the individual out of the conversation, you know? The important things, I, I think we would be remiss to not thoroughly vet this idea and even if it doesn't pass that, you know, even if it just seems that there's too many complications, at least we've had that conversation and really, you know, made an effort to pursue any options. It would be important to remember though that, you know, a twenty percent responsibility is still twenty percent and that is not an insignificant number. And so, um, you know, I, I think, you know, to be continued and perhaps at the future agenda where we can, um, perhaps get Patrick back is to look at what the timing means, um, what funds we have available to us, whether we need to fold it into budget considerations. Um, do we wanna look at any of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for this? All of those things, but it seems like that next step would be to invite him back to have that sidewalk, just to see
Definitely.
what our options actually are.
Yeah.
No, I agree, yeah.
So a lot of nodding of heads to.
I'm waiting for Patrick to get back to me as we speak.
Okay. Super. And perhaps if Rory wants to come back and, and participate in the conversation, she can do that in the future.
I'll, I'll, I'll let her know which side.
Super. Great. Thank you all. And moving on, we have some guests here, which I imagine is for our broadband update. Um, so we have the MidCoast Internet Development Coalition, but now is a new iteration. Um, and so we have, can I invite you, Deb, up to the podium to chat with the board? Or Josh, do you wish to give a preamble at all to this invitation?
Um, yeah, so, uh, I wanted to invite, um, representatives from the MidCoast Internet Development Coalition to, um, discuss with, with us the Axiom feasibility study and, and what, um, what it's about, what that study covers and how Lincolnville could be involved with that study and the cost of it.
Yeah, great. Do you wish to come up to the podium and chat?
Sure. I could always chat. So I'm Deborah Hall, the chair of the MidCoast Internet Coalition, which of course is a group of towns that, uh, um, that have, uh, you know, banded together, so to speak, for, um, advancing, uh, advancing broadband and through regional utility. As you know, we recently had three successes with Camden, Rockport, and Thomaston, all three having the interlocal agreement on their ballots on June eighth and all three passing with an overwhelming majority of the, uh, votes, of those voting. Um, so anyway, so we're very happy about that. Um, as you also know, and Josh alluded to, um, we have, um, Mark Willett from Axiom Technologies, um, is, Axi, is here tonight. And Axiom is, um, is the entity that we have, um, chosen to do our feasibility study for, um, for the, uh, for what I should have said, uh, is the MidCoast Internet Development Corporation. So MIDC is the name of the new regional utility. Actually, it's not, um, legally in existence yet. It will be in a few days. Camden has to take some, you know, pretty ministerial action tomorrow and we had to file the articles of incorporation, et cetera, et cetera. But this week it will be, um, a legal entity. Um, and anyway, that entity then will contract with, with Axiom, uh, to do the feasibility study. Um, certainly the feasibility study will be done for the three towns that are part of the interlocal agreement. Um, we hope that Rockland will be joining us, um, as, you know, in the interlocal agreement and obviously with the feasibility study hopefully, um, pretty soon this summer. Um, we, uh, have also have looked at a couple of small towns, as I think you guys know, um, to join us um, in paying for their portion of the feasibility study to consider them and what we would, what we plan to have as a phase one build. Obviously, we can't make any commitments on who the phase one build includes and because that's the purpose of doing the feasibility study in the first instance. Um, and I know that Lincolnville has expressed interest in perhaps, um, you know, joining in on a feasibility study. And that's what we're here to talk to you about. And I can't speak for Mark or Axiom Technologies and.
Yes, she can and she always has.
So I guess, you know, I guess we were thinking that it might be good to have a dialogue with you in terms of what you expect to see out of, you know, a feasibility study, what you, you know, what your goals are, what you wanna see it, uh, do for you, um, and maybe we can engage in that discussion.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, but, and of course, yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know how you wanna do this because we've gotta have this recorded. Therefore, you have to be close to a microphone, isn't that correct?
Yeah, we, 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 we wanna avoid having a roundtable conversation in this context, but we could, I will just throw, depending on how stilted the conversation feels, you know, we could always have a workshop at a future, um, stage. But for now, um, we have to run it through the podium. Sure. So.
Sure. So lately, I'm just wondering if it would work if Mark came up here and he could answer, I could answer some questions and he could answer others depending on what the question is.
Yeah, sure. Is that all right with the board?
Sure.
Okay, yeah.
What was I gonna ask? Well.
And would, sorry, would you just speak into the microphone and introduce yourself for those?
Sure. So my name is Mark Willett. I'm the CEO of Axiom Technologies. We're an internet service provider and a professional services company based in Machias. We are working up and down the coast though and have a number of projects ongoing and, and serve a number of islands also, including Cranberry Isle, which is kinda close to you guys, um, and a few others. So, uh, we've been doing this work for about fifteen years or so. Well, we've been in business for over seventeen, almost eighteen years. We've been doing fiber optic work for the last five, six years.
Now, I'm, I'm pointing to a guy behind me and saying, come on in. That's all right. Hey, I, I got a couple of specific questions for you, Mark, but, uh, first I'd kind of ask that you characterize what you, what the study would include, what you all would do.
Sure. So the, really why I was hired was because I've done some pretty interesting work with a lot of small communities across me, giving them, uh, doing two, three basic things. And in this study, I'm gonna do a couple more things beyond that, but just three basic things. One, um, essentially characterize what they have, meaning if we build fiber optics into your town, what does that cost? Uh, how many people would get hooked up? And then I put together a five-year, essentially pro forma, that's a fancy word for a spreadsheet that shows what we would project as revenues and expenses around that fiber build. And then I, from there, I typically then take that information and then I say, okay, given what you have in town, let's just say you were, I'm just making this up, eighty percent spectrum covered already. Those areas would not be allowed to be funded by federal or state dollars necessarily because it would not, it, they would be over the threshold for fundability. So we'd be sort of looking to work with you as a community to look at those places that are less than, well, now just changed twen- uh, fifty-ten, less than fifty megabits per second down, ten up. And if you don't reach that threshold, then you are eligible for state funding. And there's a, quite a bit of state funding coming down right now that's available and there's gonna be a lot more available through, um, some federal funding that's coming through to the state. So we'd work with you, and that's what I'm planning on doing with, um, with the coalition, is to work with through those issues. What I just described with each of the communities that are part of the partner communities. And then I'm gonna take it one step further and I'm gonna create a, a little, I'm gonna take all that work and wrap it up in a bow in a feasibility study that says this is how it would work in an open access network. And then I would take that information and I would wrap that in a bow and make basically what I call, uh, again, a fancy word, pitch depth, basically that we could take to financiers like Finance Authority of Maine and maybe even private equity or, you know, banks, whatever. Um, and provide them with basically what this would look like and would they fund it essentially? Here's what the pro forma looks like for the next five years, kind of thing. Is that, is that right? Okay, just making sure. Does that feel good? All right? Yep, generally that's what we do. And so for each of the, I guess I'll just, so for each of the small towns, and every town is small in Maine, including Portland, Maine, just so we're all clear. Uh, it's all rural in Maine, but, um, just for each town, and we're, we're still evolving, the, my, my head is still thinking about this a little bit, but generally speaking, you, you, we would build you, build the people in the, the towns in the feasibility study would have standalone pro, pro, standalone cost, standalone, um, revenue and expenses so that if for whatever reason a town decides to go it alone and wants to just move forward, they would have the elements, the ingredients to be able to do that. And so, and the way Axiom works, we don't work on a per hour basis. So I'm not like, okay, my six hours is up, you've paid me, thank you very much, I walk out the door. The way we work is, uh, basically we're with you for life. As long as you wanna ask me questions and keep working with me for whatever reasons into the future beyond the feasibility study, I'm always available to come back and have conversations. And there are many towns that have come back, three, four, five. I'm working with Hamden right now. I did an initial feasibility study with them almost four years ago and they're now back and I'm working with them now. So on my dime now. So, you know, it's just how we sort of work.
Okay, so I, I think, I think you just answered my first question, which was, um, if, uh, if, if, if we were to do, to go in with M D I C and, um, for the feasibility study and would, but M D I C chooses not to work with us or we choose not to work with them, uh, would we still have access to the results of your, of your study?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, and the second question I had, uh, it kinda has to do with cost and you haven't given any figures yet. But I understand if we go with M D I C, it's going to be.
M I D C.
M D I C, see it's. Okay, but I, I wanna say it's a problem that you guys have created.
It's a good problem.
Okay, yeah, it is. Uh, but anyway, uh, if we were to go with that organization, uh, let's call it the utility.
Let's do it.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, yeah, uh, if we go to the utility and pay two-thirds of what it might go, of what it would cost, right? Let's ballparking, I don't know what the numbers are. What it would cost if we did it alone with Axiom? Would we be getting pretty much the same comprehensive results as if we paid you, you say, I don't know, twenty-five thousand dollars instead of fifteen through the utility? I mean, is that, is that something you could fairly speculate on?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, well, I bring it every day and that's what I do for every town that I work with. So I don't hold back on anything. You get whatever you need. And if there are questions outside of the feasibility study in how we originally envisioned it and what that contract would look like, we would just add those and work through them and be fine. Not adding necessarily cost, but just work through whatever you need to be comfortable to move forward. The whole point for me, so I, while I'm a, I'm a planner and I do planning and do plenty of professional services and that's fine. My major objective is to get small towns built so that they have better internet than New York City. So that's what my objective in Maine and that's what I've been building for fiber optic systems, is to really take the have-nots and make them haves. So I believe in Maine, I believe in small communities, I believe in rural Maine. And so when I'm taught, working with the community, we work, you know, hand in glove to make sure that the goals are met and that the feasibility study reflects what the town would like to see so that they can take the next step after that, which is essentially implementation. Because if we don't go to implementation, then I failed. So I literally, I, I'm not just like a planner and then sit the planning on the, you know, you have plenty of those. If that's what you're looking for, I'm not your guy. If you wanna do something, then I wanna be, I'd be happy to be part of that and, and help you get there.
So how much will the, the study cost?
So, so, uh, what I've charged these towns that are part of the, that was the initial discussion would be the same for you. It'd be fifteen thousand dollars. It would be a standalone. You could have it standalone, you could have it part of the, you'd be part of whatever you need to, to be part of. We could make a standalone program, but we'd also include it in, in their feasibility study too. So you could have it both ways.
And is it your understanding we could pay for that with ARP funds?
Broadband is an eligible activity, um, so I can't see, I have not been told any reason why it can't be funded yet. I talk to the state all the time, um, and so I don't see any issues with that whatsoever.
Okay. And, and just to clarify what, what the study is looking at, would, would it tell us what is on the poles in Lincolnville? Like what internet is, you know, the, the standard, the fiber standard that's, that's running down our streets?
So it, a little hard to do that comprehensively if it's privately owned fiber. I can tell you this fiber there, what the fiber strand count is or what's inside of that plastic tube, uh, challenging. So don't know really if I could give you that. I could give you a general idea of what you see on the poles, that's not a problem. Um, but if you're looking for very specific information, um, and if you're looking for very specific information about current providers on the poles, um, that information has been difficult to glean and it's getting harder. So if you have spectrum, they do not wanna tell you. If you have CCI, they'll come, consolidated, they'll come and make a presentation to you, um, maybe. If you pull their teeth and you ask them sixteen times, they might come and you could probably get some sense of what they have there. It's really, from my perspective, it's less about what's on the poles now and more about what you wanna do in the future. So ultimately, even if there's fiber there and most places there is, you just can't access it. So what good is it knowing that it's there? You can't get to it. So it's a matter of then, okay, what do we wanna do? Take our own destiny into our own hands and do we wanna move forward or not? So it's a little bit of a balance. If you have some local providers like LCI's in the region or Pioneer or Axiom, if we were here, you could at least maybe, maybe have a reasonable conversation, maybe, depending on who those providers are about really what's up there and what they're providing or not providing and why they won't do what they're doing. I assume you could drag some of these companies to your podium and have a conversation to drag. I'm sorry, I apologize. You could invite some of these folks to your podium and they could speak to that. But it's gonna be hard for me to give you exactly what's up there, other than to tell you there's fiber there or there's not and here are the roads. And we would be at Axiom, just to be clear, here's the other thing. If you're looking for, um, a partner like Axiom to do the, the feasibility study, I just wanna make sure you're aware, you will be involved. I will be talking to you, you will be helping me understand what your town is like. Because this, I am also not gonna do all the hu- heavy work for you, sorry. You're gonna have to be part of it. I only work with communities that wanna work with me, relatively speaking. And I don't mean that to be, I, I've got a lot going on. There's a lot of Maine trying to be built right now. So I, I work with a coalition of the willing. And so if you're interested in that, and that doesn't mean you do the work, but it just means like, hey, if you know roads that don't have service or you're getting complaints from some people, be good to know that, kinda thing. So that we could just have a better sense of what's going on in your community. I wanna give you the best process, you know, the best solution that we can for, for your community. So. That make sense? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Um, I have a question. It's a two-part question, partially for you and maybe partially for our town administrator, just regarding the mechanism around securing your services and how towns thus far have secured your services and have they gone through a competitive bidding process? Did the Midcoast Internet Development Corporation go through a competitive bidding process? And then how that would work for us because we have very clear policy on that?
Yeah, um, we have not, when MIDC comes into an existence later this week, it won't go through a competitive bidding process and we don't need to go through one because it's for professional services. And in Rockport and I understand in Camden as well, those towns would not have to go through a competitive bid process for professional services.
Okay, all right.
Oh, then me?
Yes.
That might be challenging here 'cause our charter requires services of greater than eight thousand dollars or something. It's eight thousand.
Yes.
Go through a selection process. Um, I'm trying to think if, if there was a mechanism where perhaps we could work through MIDC and they contract on our behalf, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so that was, I guess, part of the clarity I'm seeking is you're gonna be working with a number of towns that likely have the same, um, procedural elements. And so have you, has that come up for conversation in terms of just what the mechanism for us to?
It hasn't come up as a problem because, um, as I said, Camden and Rockport don't, aren't required to do it for professional services. And I'm assuming Thomaston and Rockland are similar, but I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah.
Um, I hope that they have looked at that themselves.
Yeah.
Um, and some of the small towns really probably, they fall below, some of the small towns, uh, we are asking for a five thousand dollar feasibility from them. So it probably falls below any threshold that they have anyway.
Mm-hmm, okay. And this may be putting you on the spot a little bit, but what are, if we were going to put it out for a competitive bid, what sort of competition is there in terms of?
Possibly. I mean, there are a couple of, of straight consultants that work in the state.
Yeah.
Um, so you could, you know, you could make that, you could make that available to them, I guess, and see what they had to say about it. Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay.
We compete all the time. Not, not really because I'm a little bit different than they are, 'cause I'm a internet service provider.
Yeah.
So you kinda, with me, you're gonna get a pretty strong point of view.
Yeah.
So with them, you may not. That bothers me because I don't like you at the end to have more questions than when you started. And sometimes that's what I feel happens because I bid on projects that they have did the, did the planning work on. And I felt like the communities didn't always understand what they were, what they were doing. And I was like, isn't that the point of the process is to, so you guys are comfortable and know exactly where you're going and why you're going there? I mean, I have a couple, I have a question or a couple of questions, if you don't mind. I'm just trying to get some clarity on where you guys are. So yes, you can bid, yes, and no issues from my perspective. So.
Sure.
Um, do you, I mean, there's a reason I'm here, I assume. What would that be? I mean, what is it that you're really looking, what, what got you started thinking about this? I mean, they, they tell me that you're pretty fired up about internet, which is exciting for a company like mine 'cause I like working with communities that are fired up about internet. Not all are. So do you have a, do you have a, what, what, what do you, why, you know?
Back in, before, before I got on the board, the fall of twenty nineteen, I guess. Yeah, uh, our local, our incumbent, LCI, came to the board and said that they were planning on, this is before COVID and all that stuff, said that they had certain plans for expansion. And was pretty much asking about, asking the town, but characterizing this. Let me know if I'm getting it wrong. If the town wanted to help them out, participate in any way, mo- mostly through Connect Maine type of arrangement. And that prompted the select board then to create a broad, a committee, broadband committee. And I was on that committee and a couple of other people in the room were on that committee too. And anyway, there was a mission that was established, let's expand broadband to, to Link, to, to Lincolnville. Uh, committee went through version one, isn't that how, committee? Time expired and now it's up and running again. And the minute, the miss, the mission as determined by the select board is pretty much expanded to, let's make sure it happens. And try to get it to homes rather than just this neb- to, to the wall for the house, rather than a more nebulous or unclear.
Every house.
Yeah, a notion of let's just have a saturation level and let's reach that level. Okay. And that, so anyway, we, we, we've got a broadband committee that's doing work right now. We had a broadband committee before, it did a lot of work. You were probably the only consultant that we did not interview at the time. We talked with about everybody else, I think, and a lot of other towns. So yeah, I think there's a level of commitment, yeah. I don't know what that's gonna translate into.
So, so just, so right now in your town, you, I mean, there is Lincolnville telephone is here, which is an LCI something. I'm, I'll get a little confused about LCI 'cause they have several names and, but they start as a telephone. They're your telephone provider, is that correct?
Yes.
Like hardline telephone. All right. And they, do they provide, they don't provide a fiber optic solution?
They do. It's, it's according to them, running down ninety-four, ninety-five percent of our public roads. However, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of, of Lincolnville residents do not have it. However, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of of Lincolnville residents do not have it up to their home because they can't afford to run it down their private road. And so it's also the, the, in in my understanding, it's it's the slowest and most expensive fiber offering in the nation or close to it. Um, and so it's just very expensive. And that puts it out out of reach of a lot of people in Lincolnville.
So it's a one-off, one-off, so you call. LCI and they say, I wanna be hooked up to your fiber and they give you a price.
Yes.
To do that.
Yeah, and.
And then the neighbor calls and they give that person a price to hook up.
And and so they say, I think the first two hundred fifty feet uh is included with the, with the initial uh fee. I'm not sure what what the fee is to hook up, I think it's two hundred fifty.
I I thought it was five, but anyway.
If if there's fiber running by the home, so if someone else incurred the expense of running. Fiber past a property, then it would be the connection fee.
Yeah, so um, yeah, and so we we have just, we've gotten just. Pre-COVID, during COVID, um, just so many complaints about about people saying they can't afford it. Or they keep calling them and and they're told, sorry, we're we're not coming down your road anytime soon, we just, we're too busy. Um, or if you get a number of your neighbors to partner together, then then we can come. Um, and so that's that's the current state of it right now.
So if we were to somehow work this out and uh we were, I was planning as part of the coalition for you guys. What would your outcome be, what would you wanna know at the end of it, were you comfortable with what I was saying would be the outcome? I mean, do you care, oh, I guess I'd say in a couple ways, do you care what's up there now if you can't access it? What ma- what matter is that? Or do you really wanna know, I mean, if they say they cover ninety percent of the town with fiber. Let's presume that they do that, it's probably between eighty-five and ninety percent of the town, something like that. Does that matter to you, I mean, what?
So to me, it it seems like important information if their build standard is two eighty-eight or greater. Because that seems to be the the current standard of 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 fiber networks being built today. And so if it is of that standard, then potentially that opens up an option that that we could, we could. Try to negotiate with them to buy their network. And say, here, you know, we would like to buy our network and we invite you to compete on our open access network, it seems like a win-win for them. But to at least know that information, so it it, so we look at every possible option. And if their build standard is far below two eighty-eight, then we know that and then and then it doesn't seem. Uh advantageous to to use that network. Where, you know, and 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 then an overbuild seems like that would make the most sense.
Gotcha, I see what you're saying, so so if they were running forty-eight com fiber, you're like, oh, well, that's not gonna do it for us.
Why touch it?
Why, why even talk to them kinda thing about purchasing or doing whatever you're gonna do, okay, I get it. So if you, um, okay, fair, that's good, I I'm just happy to know that, I mean, the the problem I have, the gap that you're. Helping me understand from my perspective is, I don't think I can tell you what's up there for fiber counts. So.
Isn't wire like printed like, this is two eighty-eight, this is one. Like a like a Cat Five cable, when I would buy those in high school for for land parties, it would, it would say, you know, Cat Five, whatever.
So you want an Axiom truck on a bucket with a micro, you know, looking, it's trying to find it, yeah, trying to find the two eighty-eight on it? Hmm, okay. But I just, I just, it's a little bit trickier than than that, so it's just a little bit much to, I don't know yet how to manage that for you, is the question.
So talking about private roads, cuz that really has been the thing that's been sticking in everyone's craw, really. You know, is there, you know, they're tackling all of the public right of ways and we have. A number of private roads long, driveways basically, um, how do you handle that?
So the way we, so in our planning. We typically handle that as an average price per hookup. So if you're a hundred foot off the. Or you're right on the street or you're a mile down a private driveway. We don't really take that into account, what we do is give you, we do, but by taking an average. So that we do not build anywhere where we do not serve a hundred percent of the homes. And when I say a hundred percent, I mean one hundred percent, every single home, everyone. I have to say that there's one place in Georgetown that is off the grid and three miles from a pole. And they don't want us to run it on the ground through the land preserve, they would prefer that we go a lot, across the flats. Of um tidal ocean. That's not gonna happen, so. We did have one place that I did not serve. But for the vast majority, two miles up Crummet Mountain in Somerville is going to be served. So it's just, we work with the communities to make sure that, you know, private roads get handled properly and effectively.
And do you have a range of what that cost is?
Yeah, usually we do something like, I think in, I'll have to check it again because I'm really confused, I've done so much work.
Sure.
That I get a little bit.
Yeah, you're in the hot seat, it's okay.
Confused, now, now, I just get confused about how much freaking, all these projects I got going on. But generally speaking, it's about a thousand dollars per drop is typically what I just average out. That includes all the equipment at the house, which is about two hundred fifty bucks. It's actually a little less than that when you buy at scale, so maybe it's closer to two hundred bucks, hundred and seventy to two hundred bucks in equipment. That includes all the little bibs and bobs and little picktails and all the other stuff. And then usually I charge somewhere, do you, just average about two hundred bucks to drill the hole in the side of the house. Get the fiber inside, hook them up, and then everything else is the drop, the drop, drop cable's cheap, right? Two count drop cables, super cheap, it's the labor, everything's labor. Half the cost of, at least of every fiber build is all labor.
And there's nothing for easements included in that also to the homes?
Well, towns handle them differently. Some towns, like Monhegan Island. Just had a decree and said, we we are gonna work in the right of way and you homeowner tough. And if you don't want it across your lawn, that's fine, you don't have to get hooked hooked up. But every place else around you is gonna have fiber running down the right of ways, their case, right of ways is water lines. Not just the roads, but water lines, other towns. Handle things in a little bit different way, but generally speaking, the road, the right of way is available. And if there's a utility pole there, even on private drive, that's, the utility pole is typically, not always. Very typically owned by the utility, so therefore we can have access to it and run fiber on that pole, even down a long driveway. So it really matters, depends on what, how, what the sensibilities are in town, private uh, private. Uh, I mean, private land, it matters to me, it's like super sacred and super like, people care a lot. So in those cases, we talked to community or talked to individual landowners about. We will run fiber at across the land, your land, if you don't have poles or if you're buried underground and your conduit's filled or you don't have a conduit. Or whatever, we're pretty creative, we've done it a lot of different ways to get a private residence down a big, I pulled. I pulled fiber through a large bog, two miles, three miles, myself, because I wanted to show my guys we. Absolutely, I'll do it all, so I've done it, I've done that myself with the fiber right on my back, just driving through. So, you know, you do what you gotta do, so that's what we would do here, if you have a lot of private roads. And as I drove it, you have a beautiful community, by the way, um, um. As I drove in, I was like, yeah, I could see that if there's private roads here, this is gonna be like down, you know, you don't, can't see. They swirl around down to the water or wherever they're going, so.
Mm-hmm, current, yeah.
For me, what I really would like to see at the end of your study is the worst-case scenario. And the reason for that, what's it gonna be for every house in this town to have a drop? If along the way, we do find out information of all our already network, that's just a bonus. There's gonna be two ways that could go. The current provider's gonna be mad and won't even speak to us, or they're gonna see the writing on the wall with the competition coming into town, they're gonna say. We need to do something here, okay, so what I want to see is worst-case scenario. What's it, what's it gonna be to outfit every house here in this town and it's, that's gonna require an overhaul? That's just my personal opinion, but I, that's what I wanna know, that's, that's what I think this feasibility study for this town needs to be. Um, that way we have no surprises, we have nothing to worry about. Um, and we can make a informed decision and move forward.
Makes sense.
There's a couple, there's a couple people uh from the broadband committee and I don't know if they have any questions.
Yeah, well, let's see if the board has any more questions for Deb or as you guys step away from the podium. Um, I feel like we've, you you have a final question for them? Yeah, okay, great.
I don't know if it's a question, maybe more of a statement, that I, speaking for myself, um. I I want us to be part of the phase one build out of Midcoast Internet. And uh I I know currently we are not part of that that group. And Lincolnville is a unique town where we have a lot of fiber already. But, you know, to access that, as I said before, you need to pay a lot of money. Um, monthly and sign a three-year contract, which is unheard of. Uh, or you need to pay thousands of dollars and have it run down your road, and so even if. Um, the incumbent had fiber running to every house, I would, I still would want to overbuild over all of that because. Having competition is a good thing and and the price people are paying for internet here is is outrageous, I think, and so. I think, you know, you you look twenty years down the line of people paying a fair price. And it seems like that overbuild would pay for itself. But we don't even have that case because, you know, hundreds of people in Lincolnville don't have the fiber running to their home. So to me, the 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 feasibility study is that first step for our town to to just know which direction to even go in. You know, this information that that we don't have yet. And and so once we have that, we can, um, will know more and the utility will know more. In terms of having a conversation and seeing if we can partner with Midcoast Internet for for phase one, if that makes sense for them and and for us.
Mm-hmm, okay, great, any other questions, oh, sorry, Deb.
I would just like to make a a comment to that. Um, I know we've had discussions, Josh and and Steven and we before on this and um I would just encourage you to. Be really serious about that take rate, um, you know, we, there are various ways that we're going to do pre-subscriptions or whatever to try to determine what the take rate is. But if you got a possibility of, you know, participating in Midcoast Internet, you gotta have a. Really big take-up rate if we're even going to talk about overbuilding. So, you know, so I mean, if you could blow us away with a take rate, then that would be.
So, uh, so so do you have a magic number for us? As far as take rates?
Well, maybe I think generally, generally in most towns, I start at fifty percent take rate, so. That, you know, if you were hyper-competitive here already, like some of their town, where you have Spectrum, Consolidated, LCI, GWI. Uh, you know, in the downtowns and, you know, right, then I typically start at forty percent take rate. So that's pretty aggressive, both of those are relatively aggressive, in a town like this, if you have people who are clamoring for. Good internet, you know, fiber optic internet. I would not be surprised if you can't get a sixty-five percent take rate here. Pretty easily, relatively speaking, now I say pretty easily, probably over the first two years. And so the whole game, from my perspective, is very simple. How much does it cost, what's that, what's that mean? And then what does that take rate look like and what does that revenue stream look like against that? So that you can figure out whether or not the feasibility really makes sense from an economic standpoint, not just for the coalition or for the. Development corp, I can't.
Yeah.
Utility.
Utility, thank you, the utility, but also for the funders, whoever they may be, it's gotta make sense. And so making sense is really in the numbers ultimately, so. That's, I think, one of the reasons they were attracted, I'm I'm the only guy really in the state who really does that kinda work. Like really lays it out, here's what five years of revenue looks like projected, here's what the expenses against that look like. You know, here's what that delta is, what's the gap between a bond and over. Uh, other types of financing, it really helps communities just get a much better grasp. Of the finances and that's usually the most uncomfortable place, I mean, it's one thing to talk, I mean. A lot of committees like to talk about the technology itself, it's glass in a freaking plastic tube. This is not rocket science ultimately. The, what really you should be thinking about is the finances of this thing and how does that work for your community, what's the risk? Cuz the town manager's gonna be talking about that, right? And really, what is it, what happens is this is worst-case scenario, you know, if we build to every, every. You know, every home, what does that look like from a cost? That's not to say you'll ever get a hundred percent take rate, but you also will increase everybody's property's values if you build a fiber optic drop to every home. For sure, I mean that in a good way for them, at sale or whatever, whenever that property passes the next generation, that's gonna be worth. Worth it, and I think there are many, many communities that are kicking themselves right now. That didn't build to a hundred percent standard cuz they were trying to save money, understandably, and there's nothing wrong with that. But now people are coming to me and we're signing up and it's expensive to sign up once all the trucks have rolled. And now you're doing individual sign-ups again, out on an island, well, it gets kind of expensive to do that, so it's, it can be prohibitive. So getting as many people signed up upfront in a pre-subscription is vitally important to keeping the cost down. Which is ironic cuz you think, well, why would you wanna do that, who cares? Well, you would, you should care cuz that's where the cost really savings happen. When the trucks are all here and everything's getting built, that's when economies of scale really can happen. Does that make sense, make sense?
Yeah, yeah, um, and.
Yeah.
Um, so when will the utility have the form letter that we can use to? That that people can use to knock on doors and and officially get those take rate, those those pre-subscriptions?
When you and Matt and Steven and the MarCom group get it done.
Okay.
I like that.
And last question, last question for you, can you lay fiber on the ground? Can you run it just laying on the ground like through the woods, because I've I've heard that's been done? Is that something that Axiom has has done and is that feasible?
Yes, and yes, yes, we've done it, and yes, it can be done. And typically the fiber uh we use is rated to be on a utility pole in the ground or on the ground. So, so it's reasonable, the the biggest, um, the biggest, so. It's, everything's vulnerable in its own way, right? It, on the poles is just as vulnerable as being on the ground, really, literally, because a drunk driver can come along anytime and knock three poles out. You can have a nice storm of ninety-eight and and, you know, knock down, you know, whatever happened to your town, it was crazy everywhere. But, you know, you could have those catastrophic issues on a pole. So I don't, I don't find stuff to be less vulnerable on the pole at all, in fact, I find it to be. Much better on the ground, relatively speaking, now that's just me speaking. Every other provider or or consultant thinks I'm crazy, but I've done it, it's perfectly fine being there. So it typically gets self-buried over time, so on, especially on private roads. I don't know if you can save some money by putting it on the ground versus on the pole because you don't have to go through a pole licensing process, which is expensive and stupid and. Just painful in the state, but you can do that. Uh, you can avoid that and and just drop it on the ground and it gets self-buried in a couple of years, or you can put it in a conduit, but conduit's expensive. Then you have to dig and we're not in the Midwest and we're on rocks here and, you know, it gets complicated. Put it on the, put it on top of the ground, it works out pretty well.
And how much is fiber per per foot, like when you're buying at the scale you're buying?
Could be on this, in the sense, you know, I mean, seriously, you know, I mean, uh.
Wow.
It's less than a dollar, I mean, a foot, easily, less than a dollar per foot for two count cheap, cheapy old fiber, it's pretty. Pretty inexpensive, so, yeah, the the pricing is not, the problem with the, with fiber is not in the price of the fiber. The problem with fiber is the price of labor, always. To run that fiber cable is much more expensive than a cable itself. Much, much more expensive, really triple, quarter, I mean, really a lot more. So when you, so if we built a mil, if I told you it was a million dollars, which I'm not telling you, but if it was a million dollars. I'd say at least a half a million of that, at least, is in labor. So the cost of the equipment, so we, the the other thing that scares towns is the cost of the equipment and if we're gonna own it or the utility's gonna own it, how do we replace it? What happens down the road when we've all forgotten about this and now stuff is running and something breaks? But the particular equipment that we use is all, it's really not that expensive, it's expensive when you add it all up. You say, okay, there's a rack of. You say, okay, there's a rack of, a, you know, regen equipment in this shack, and the shack is $80,000, and the regen equipment is $150,000. But you say, okay, but what happens, what about this one piece right here? What if this thing fails? Well, that's $1,200. It's not the end of the world. So the cost per, as you break it all down, is manageable. So when you, I give you a price later on, or when somebody gives you a price of it's $3 million to build out, and it freaks everybody out, you bring that to the, the, that cable cost. I could break it right down to, right down to the cost per foot. So you can look at all of that and sort of get a general sense of what the risk is to the town over time. You know, to, but it's not, oh, oh, in and of itself outrageously expensive. There's nothing that's, uh, there's nothing like, oh, by the way, I'm gonna have a half a million dollar piece of equipment in your town. That's not really what happens. Now, if the whole shack burned down, it would be insurable, and all that equipment would get replaced, and it would be perfectly fine. We would have you back up and running in three days, maybe. Uh, something like that. But, you know, it's something like, like really catastrophic is not. It's all insurable, it all works, we build right back up.
Yeah.
That's it.
That makes sense. So I have a last thing, a suggestion for the utility. So there's, there's a village in the UK called, called Clapham. And I think it's in 2014, they had terrible internet service. And so the townspeople banded together and used their local equipment, and they ran fiber, like neighbors running fiber together. And now they have one of the fastest, you know, networks in the whole nation.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Of the UK. And, and so I suggest the utility hire, uh, you know, people that, you know, that you, you could have the, 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 the people in the bucket trucks, but also workers that are just running it on the ground. That's their job. They just run on the ground, maybe they're fast runners even. I'd like to intern, you know, doing that. Like, that sounds exciting, like laying fiber for your community. You just have to run it through the woods, so.
So, so just to that point, right now in Somerville, there's a group, the broadband committee, um, is doing, uh, we've given them our Fulcrum application, which is an in-the-cloud application on how you catalog all the utility poles.
Okay.
And they're doing that for us, and they're excited about it. So there's three or four.
The committee's doing that.
The committee's doing that. We've had, we've had, yep, Steve, he, he's gonna do that. Uh, anyway, um, so we're all in on community broadband. Um, so in some of the islands, we've had people work with us to bring fiber on the ground and such like that. So we keep pushing that. In Monhegan, they're gonna do a lot of that on, their own work there because we said, and by the way, we will pay them too. We can, we do this, we do both. We do, so on an island, they like to keep their own economy. They like to keep the money on the island, fair enough, we all do in small communities. So we, Axiom is paying them a per hour for some of their local folks, and we'll go out and help them and direct them as they pull the fiber and be part of our team to do that. It's kind of fun. It's a really cool way to do it. And right now in, um, in Whiting and East Machias, really remote, really depressed, they're letting us put up, um, campaign signs that say, say, "I got fiber, you should get yours. Call Axiom right now," kind of thing, sort of building up just community, pro, being proud of them able to access that kind of level of connectivity. I mean, Whiting's gonna have better connectivity than, literally, New York City, South Korea, Austin, Google Cities, gig to a gig. We're, we're putting fiber in now that, sorry, you got me going, I'm gonna stop.
I know, so, so, yeah.
Sit down.
Thank you. You, you beat me to the punch. So, so we're getting into a little bit of higher levels.
Sorry, sorry.
Um, but, uh, I know we have some members of the audience here who may wanna speak up. I don't know if, okay. Um, but just before we move off of that download of information that we received, um, certainly it seems that the board, with a nodding of the heads at, at a future agenda, um, we're gonna need to have a little, you know, we'll digest all of this, maybe collate it a little more and have a little bit more in-depth conversation about what this all means for Lincolnville. Yes?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Great, that being said, do any members of the public, or I should ask the board first, um, would, do you want to invite any members of the public, should they wanna get up and speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, great. Do either of you wish to address the board? You don't have to, don't feel guilted into it at all.
No, my earlier questions have been subsequently answered.
Fair, no, he's good. Yeah, please come up to the podium, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Stephen Colthei, and I live at 26 Hemlock Drive, Lincolnville, Maine. Hemlock is one of those sort of semi-private roads that we have so many of. It's off 235, and I live on McGonagall Creek, so it's the next street after Mariners Brook. And I, um, am on the Lincolnville Broadband Committee, thanks to your vote. I'm also one of the Lincolnville representatives to the, uh, to the utility. I also, uh, study internet and write about it, um, for a think tank in Washington DC called the Brookings Institution. And my day job is I, I teach at MIT, International Economic Development. And I live in Lincolnville, Maine, full-time, um, particularly since COVID closed the university. And when I, um, came, I, I've lived in Lincolnville for 13 years, off and on, sometimes full-time. I, I served in the, uh, in the Obama administration and lived in Washington full-time for a portion of that, but I always had a home here. But I came back and lived here full-time at the beginning of COVID, and continued my, um, work from home. And, um, as with everyone in Lincolnville, um, we have a monopoly here of only one, uh, internet service provider, LCI, and they are mine. Um, and I started the process of, um, uh, because of the work I do, uh, I, I really needed more than a DSL, uh, line. And, and some of the groups I worked with actually are in Africa. And I, um, found that I was on conference calls with people in Africa who had better connectivity than I did in Lincolnville, Maine. So I, I realized that, you know, we should be at least as competitive as Malawi, which is the eighth poorest country in the world, by the way. And I thought, um, you know, I've looked at this issue from a macro standpoint. Now I wanna look at it from a really micro standpoint, starting at my house. And I started talking to LCI, and it took quite a long time, um, about a year, uh, for them to, to answer the phone. And they did, um, and eventually, um, what I learned was that I could get fiber. Um, I live about 450 feet from 235. Um, there was no fiber on 235 at Hemlock Drive. The fiber stopped in the, uh, ri- right around Moody Mountain, and then it resumed again, uh, almost at 105. So I lived in the, on the, in the Hope portion. So I lived on a portion of 235 that did not have fiber, even though 235 is one of, I would say, one of Lincolnville's major roads. So I started to, um, talk to them about how could I get fiber because I, uh, my, my, my work and my livelihood depended on it. And, um, eventually, um, I ended up, uh, striking a deal with them where they had brought it as far as Mariners Brook, which is the next road before mine. And if I paid for the additional portion plus my driveway, I could get fiber. So that number ended up being about $2,500 for 400 feet of fiber. So I paid $2,500 for 400 feet of fiber. I also signed the compulsory three-year contract with compulsory, uh, escalators. You don't have a choice over that. I didn't want telephone service, you don't have a choice over that. You must have telephone service, even though I don't have a telephone. Uh, but you must have telephone service. So my cost is $109 a month um, for what is billed to me as 100, uh, down and 20 up. I measure my speed, uh, every day. I've had, um, uh, the service for about, I would say, seven months. The highest download speed I've ever measured is 87. And the highest upload speed I've ever measured is 16. So I asked them, I said, you know, if I went to Hannaford and I bought a pound of hamburger meat, and it was $4, but I only got eight tenths of a pound of hamburger meat, I'd have a point of view about where's my remaining hamburger meat or my refund? And they said, well, yeah, but you could always go to Shaw's. And I said, well, that's true, I could. They said, but we're the only provider. And I said, well, that's true too. So the point I, I'm, I'm making is that, um, not only, uh, as, as Josh pointed out, in Lincolnville, do we have, uh, among the nation's highest rates and lowest service, but we also are one of the relatively few communities that has a monopoly service provider who has stated publicly, um, that they would not be prepared to even compete on a public-owned utility. Now, um, as Mr. Late said, that could change as competition changes because how you feel today may be different. What is sweeping the country right this minute is municipal broadband, and it's happening everywhere in America. And the notion of breaking the monopoly by the municipality owning the, the fiber and then having competing bids by operators, there's no question that the municipality would never be the operator. We would simply own the fiber, and these private companies would be the operators. The analogy I use is it's sort of like in the, in the old days with the railroads. There was, you know, there were several different railroad companies, uh, you know, Boston and Maine and Atchison, Topeka and Santa Fe and Union Pacific, but there was one railroad line. And different companies would compete, and they would compete based on price and service. So if one company, for example, didn't have freight cars, and therefore their price was high because their supply of freight cars was low, and another company did, then you would have the benefit of being able to have that other company run that train over the same track. And that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about the municipality owning the track and different private companies competing to provide the service. With our town, you, our Board of Select Persons, eventually being empowered, instead of taking whatever we are given, you would have the authority to say, wait a minute, we want a competitive bid, and we have a competitive process, and we believe in the free market, and we don't believe in monopolies, and therefore we would love to have you, LCI, who's, who was born in our town, be the winner. But you have to earn that. You have to give us the same price and quality of service that somebody else who agrees to, to bid, uh, to run a train over our track would do. And that's really why I am so passionate and why I have spent not as many hours as some of my colleagues here. But I've spent quite a few, um, working on this, and I will continue to. My number one interest is Lincolnville. So my interest in representing Lincolnville in the MIDC is, and I'm very open about this, I'm very unapologetic about being, you know, sort of a Lincoln villain. But I, but I feel very strongly that we in particular, different from some of the other towns, really would stand to benefit from participating. And the first step in participating is participating in this feasibility study. It's a, this is a long road, and it's complicated. But, um, I really do believe at the end of the day that we can do it without taxes, without tax increases, with very limited, if any, public debt, particularly given the level of, uh, grant money that's now available today, which is very different than it was pre-COVID. The world is very different in terms of funding options. I would have had a different recommendation for you 18 months ago than I have today. But I think we are, we are very lucky. And the last thing I just wanna say is that in looking at the country as a whole, it's unbelievable to me, the resources that exist in this midcoast area. I, I always feel this way. I moved here from Los Angeles 13 years ago, and it just floors me all the time, the kinds of, the kinds of resources we have. The people who are working on this committee and the, um, and the groups of, of experts that have been put together are, are just first-rate. And our ability from a Lincolnville standpoint to leverage and tag on to that expertise as opposed to reinventing the wheel ourselves, by ourselves in town, I think is, is also, uh, super important. So thank you for, for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for Debra, but it's not a board selection question. But, so it's, it's totally different. I'll, I'll ask you later, I've got your email address, okay?
Okay, great. The, guaranteed this is not the last.
Yeah, I know, but I got, I got, yeah, I gotta ask, I gotta ask her this anyway, so.
Sure, no, no, that's great, absolutely. Thank you all very, very much for your time this evening. And you're very detailed, on, on the fly, information you were able, no! I'm genuinely, thank you, really. It's, it's refreshing to get good, hard nuggets. Yeah, and to be in person, so thank you for doing that, very much.
You, you guys blazed a trail, this is our first public meeting in.
In over a year.
Yeah, I know.
18 months, you're, you're hallowed guests. Thank you all. Okay, so next on our agenda, um, still pertinent to the conversation, we at a previous meeting, uh, discussed a piece of communication to send to our county commissioners. You have the draft. You have the draft before you, uh, would anyone care to make a motion?
I'd like the board to approve and sign a letter to the Waldo County Commissioners regarding the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to be received by Waldo County.
Second.
Moved it seconded, any discussion?
Yes, I've got one thing. And that is looking at the draft of the letter, whereas, yeah, I've got, uh, the last paragraph, it says, uh, "To, uh, participate, um, in the planning for these, these funds, not only for Lincolnville residents, but all residents of Waldo County." Um, why are we saying all residents of Waldo County? I didn't, Dave, you probably drafted the letter.
I did.
Yeah. I mean, is, is that something we should, uh, so we're 100% plugged into their discussion? Is that the idea?
Well, yeah, I mean, so they didn't necessarily think that it, our interests were just on the dotted lines of our border, but extended out for everybody?
That we care about the people in clear.
And certainly our, our, our needs and our perspectives could benefit other residents of their town in a similar way. We can be advocates for ourselves, we can be advocates for each other, too.
You talked me into it, I understand.
It's very inclusive.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. I'm just, I can't tell you how happy I am, I have to do the roll call.
It's so efficient.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, do we have a broadband committee update? While we're, while we're on the subject of broadband?
Yeah, well, did you all get that late last-minute attempt?
Yes, and I read through most of it.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, all, all that's saying is that we're making progress, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, I think. And, um, uh, we've got the deadlines. We've, we've got a firm set of deadlines and a grasp on them, and who's gonna do what to get there.
Yep.
Uh, we're eliminating, uh, options fairly, I think. But I think there's some that we had started with, which don't make sense for logical reasons. And, uh, but we'll, we'll do the due diligence and contact this group to make sure that it's not gonna work, for example. I'm referring to Western Waldo.
Yeah.
Coalition.
Yeah.
It may be the case, I'm not sure yet, but it may be the case that it only makes sense to work with them if you're continuously, if you're right next to them.
Yeah.
And, but I gotta find that out.
Yeah.
And just things like that. Yeah, but, but I think it's, it's going well. But I wanted to remind the board that, uh, the second part of our mission charge, you know, charge, is to, um, do what the board, do specific tasks if the board feels the need. So all I'm, all, I'm just saying, hey, if there's anything you guys need done, let us know.
Well, and certainly if feeling pertinent to the conversation tonight, this Axiom conversation should be had at our broadband committee.
Absolutely. That's, that's, that's why we're here, yeah.
When is the next?
Uh, two weeks from last, from Thursday, so.
So will that.
It went out in the minutes, whenever. It went out in the minutes, whenever that, uh, was, but, um, two weeks from last Thursday was.
So that'd be the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, so we, we ostensibly can have a, an opinion from the broadband committee for our next meeting.
Okay, good.
And it'd be great to have the minutes in our next packet, just so we can have that to digest.
Yeah, 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 well, Jay, Jay, you met him here, is doing the, the minutes and he, and he gets them done.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, we'll get them to you.
Yeah, yeah.
But specifically.
But I mean the ones you just sent out too, so that we can have those in the packet also.
Yeah, yeah, but they didn't come, they, they came, we did, um, we had that Thursday, it was too late.
Yeah.
But specifically, if you guys could, if we could write something that you want us to find out, what questions you want to ask and answer about Axiom, that'll help us.
Well, I think the, the big one that comes up for me is just procedurally how, how we can, it's part of the charge to the broadband committee is, you know, but it, it was sort of a higher level conversation, but how and why do we engage with any particular organ? I gotta, yeah, I have to remind all of us to speak into the microphone.
I'm so sorry.
I do, I do this, I was just about to do it and I remembered. So, um, you know, how and why we are going to enter into a particular agreement or contract with any one vendor. And while I certainly was, um, very much engaged by, uh, the representative, the CEO for Axiom tonight, we still have our process. So looking at what that means, what is our process? What are the mechanisms by which we could responsibly enter into an agreement with a consultant, let alone these consultants? Um, 'cause we, we are still responsible to all of the policies and procedures, even if we do really like a particular group. Um, yeah, and then dollars and cents and how that's gonna work and the timeline for that and, you know, are, are funds or, or what are our, what are our options?
What are your options?
Yeah.
Well, we'll try to get as much information in two weeks.
Does that sound good?
Try and look at it from every angle, the pros and cons of, 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 of working with Axiom and.
Yeah, give us a pros and cons list. Very well said. Yeah.
Okay, pros and cons, okay, yeah.
So I, um, for me, I don't have much of an update because we haven't really met. I mean, what, what they told you is pretty much what's been going on.
Yep.
Um, just focusing on, on getting, um, the interlo- the interlocal agreement passed in Camden, Rockford and Tomston.
Yeah.
Um, but one thing that they didn't mention, um, so members of the, uh, Midcoast Internet Coalition, um, gave a really in-depth, comprehensive presentation to the, uh, Knox County Commissioners. Um, and it was only people from, from towns in Knox County. It's like, I didn't speak, for example. Um, and, uh, there were like ten people, um, from Camden, Rockford, Tomston, Rockland, just giving different points about why, uh, Midcoast Internet is, is important and why they think, um, the county commissioners should, should, should give a portion of their funds to the utility. And the reception was, uh, was not great. It was, we don't see a rush, um, we think that broadband is the least important, um, sort of line in, in how you spend our funding. We don't, we're gonna take our time. Um, and so that was, uh, yeah, it's just, it's good to know where they stand and now they know, but.
Is that presentation gonna be available to?
It should be on, I think if you go to like Town Hall Streams, I, I watched it streaming, so it should be, should be on there. Um, and so I have no idea what the Waldo County Commissioners' reception will be. Uh, and, and we don't know how they wanna spend their funds yet, so.
Mm-hmm.
It'll, it'll be good to, you know, start that conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but besides that, I don't think there's any, any other update.
Okay. Great. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so moving along to agenda item number twelve, um, Selectman Barnett Parker had, has a request, um, on the agenda regarding the consideration of a noise ordinance. And you have his statement, um, as well as a little bit of historic, uh, historical context, um, to consider. So I'll open the discussion.
Well, I'm kind of of a mind to, uh, put this table as, or however you wanna call it, uh, till he, he, he's here and I just could speak to it. 'Cause I don't know exactly what he has in mind. That is, uh, a decibel, you know, I, I don't know if he has specific things in mind, like a noise ordinance that has decimals involved. An ordinance against, uh, cannon, or, uh, black powder cannons, uh, you know, yeah, I don't know what he has in mind. Sure. And I, so I don't know where we began, to the truth, but.
Well, there's a, there's a fine, in my mind, there's a fine line between needing an ordinance for noise and exactly what's been recited here, disorderly conduct. Um, and charging law enforcement to be more aggressive with the disorderly conduct part of that, I think, uh, statute, I think would be more receptive to the town or the townspeople than an ordinance. An ordinance to me tells me I can't use a firecracker. It's my responsibility to know when I can use a firecracker, which teeters on the disorderly conduct part. So with something that's already in place with law enforcement, I think I would lean more towards tapping law enforcement to be a little bit more diligent um, and have the people that are in the know realize that their recommendations to someone who is complaining that, call law enforcement about disorderly conduct or something of that nature. It's great that people are reaching out to us as selectmen, uh, or as leaders of this town to help take care of these particular problems. But I don't necessarily think that when there's one event that disturbs so many people, I don't necessarily think that we'd need to come up with an ordinance to affect a lot of people and, you know, everybody's right to have a good time. As long, you know, as, you know, as long, you know what I'm saying, as, as long as it's respected.
Sure. Yeah, Josh?
So my, uh, my, um, my sense is we do not need any ordinance. We have the dis- the disorderly, um, conduct or, um, ordinance for a reason and we should flex that muscle. Um, I, my understanding is this has happened multiple times from this, from this person. Has the town received complaints about this?
We have. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, not having, uh, our own police department, it's like we have to, I, I don't know how much Wal- uh, Wal- the Waldo County Sheriff's Department knows about this. So I don't wanna, uh, say anything bad about their response 'cause they may.
Sure. They may not have been called.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I think the first step is, is to, um, I don't know if, if, if we wanna issue a statement or we just wanna just tell people in town, just as, as residents, hey, like, if, if you are hearing a loud cannon going off, that we have, we have an ordinance about that and, and, you know, please call the sheriff's department because that's not, they.
Yeah, if you're, if you're concerned.
Yeah.
Or it's causing harm or damage to you, make that. Or if you know who's doing it, start with being a good neighbor and.
Yeah.
Go to that neighbor and say, you're causing me trauma, harm. Could you cut it out and be considerate? And if, and if that's a full, you know, get out of my face kind of response, then you call Waldo County Dispatch, you know? And let's be honest, like, even if this were back in the day when we had a police officer, he wouldn't necessarily be here to respond to it anyway. You know, it would fall to Waldo County Dispatch to go to whoever happened to be patrolling, whether it's the sheriffs or the state troopers or, or what have you. Um, you know, and, and really it's, and, and that in and of itself gets back to the issue of a noise ordinance. There is no.